I'd like to call to order the Centerville City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, August 26, 2024. Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Dr. Graff?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Megan Sparks?
Here.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Their motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Deacon.
Ms. Sauber, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Next up is public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Presiding Officer of each board meeting at which public participation is permitted shall administer the following rules of the board as printed in the agenda. Tonight, we have four speakers signed up. Paul, you're first.
Good evening. Paul Sefchak, Washington Township, representing myself. I would like the Board to explain why it believes that it is entitled to more levy money than authorized by the voters. After all, it is the school board that determines the millage and the revenue it would generate when placing a levy before the voters, an amount that was certified by the county. Why do you believe that rising property values, as determined by county reappraisal, entitle you to more money than you originally requested and authorized by the voters? Mrs. Sauber and Mr. Wesney routinely point to the House Bill 920 and lament the fact that the school district only receives the amount of money authorized by the levy. As a property owner, I do not realize any additional income because the value of my home increased. By what logic should an approved levy be increased or decreased because property value reappraisals? I believe that what this board ultimately seeks is an ever-increasing revenue stream without having to go to the voters for their approval. The House got it right when they passed House Bill 920. School boards are addicted to cash. The House has tried the lesson of your addiction. I look forward to your response, and I once again point out to this board that you have a spending problem, not a revenue problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Larson.
Good evening. My name is Mike Larson. I live in Washington Township. I would ask the school board to consider the impact of a new levy on local residents, not just the impact on the school. Recently, I shared that the Centerville City Schools teachers are paid in the top 7% of all teachers in Ohio. The Ohio average teacher salary is $63,088. Mr. Dahl said that it was not a fair comparison. He felt a more appropriate comparison would be to compare Centerville City Schools' teacher salaries with like-school districts, so I took his advice. I looked at the average salary of the Olentangie, Dublin, Mason, Oakwood, and Beaver Creek school districts. While Centerville was not the highest, at $74,316 average, it was above the average of this group, which is $71,033, and well above the state average. To add context to these salaries, it is important to understand what is expected of teachers. Centerville has a below-average student-to-teacher ratio in this group. Centerville is 15:1, while the group and the state average is 16:1. Additionally, Centerville's student-to-counsel ratio is 389:1, well below the state average of 436:1. It is also important to understand what the school district has asked of local citizens. Centerville derives 75% of their district revenue from local taxes. The state average is 33%. My school property taxes have gone up 93% in the last 20 years. This is a result of four additional levies and increased property assessments. After two failed levies, the school district cut 48 positions. That represents only 4.36% cut in positions out of 1,100. I would ask the school board to focus on the level of contributions local taxpayers have and continue to make to the school district. Accepting a 0% salary increase for a generous salary is not a significant contribution by our teachers, in my opinion, especially when the average salary in Centerville is $56,333. Almost $18,000 below the Centerville average teacher salary. Residents don't get to plan on an increasing levy of revenue every four years. We have to live within our means. We can't spend more unless we get a promotion or higher-paying job. I would encourage the school board to ask the school district to lower costs to stay within their means. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Hilliard.
Good evening. My name is Amy Hilliard, and I am one of the Crisis Intervention Counselors at Centerville High School. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This is my 20th year in Centerville Schools. I started in 2005, and I've worked at every level and in several different capacities. This is my fourth year at CHS. All this to say, I've worked, lived, and raised my children in this community for quite some time, and I've never been more fearful than I am right now. Our society is battling a mental health crisis, something that I have never seen before. Each day, counselors are supporting students with social and emotional needs, some with trauma and panic attacks so debilitating they are unable to be in class. Teachers are making classroom accommodations for students with anxiety and depression. Administrators are seeing chronic absenteeism. And above all this, we have lost too many students to suicide, about one per year the last few years, and one would be too many. So what are we doing? With grant money, we've made calm rooms in each unit, stocked with coloring sheets, fidgets, and breathing prompt cards for students to take a break, calm down, and reset. We've started a Hope Squad, which is a peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. Our Hope Squad spreads awareness about mental health, promotes positivity in our school community, and teaches kids what to do if you're struggling or worried about someone else. Our Hope Squad has visited Stingley and Tower Heights. They've talked to health classes, the jazz band, as well as district bus drivers, CHS staff, plus community groups like the Noon Optimist to spread awareness about mental health. We're working hard to communicate with needs with teachers and make sure each student has multiple trusted adults at CHS. This past summer, our school community suffered tremendous losses. One of our students' parents passed away unexpectedly. There was a tragic accident involving one of our students, a student death, and a devastating car crash involving two of our students. Our counseling team communicated about each event and developed a plan of action. We offered two evenings of support, as well as a parent night. Through it all, we tried to be there for our students and their families. There's never been a summer like this one in my time here. Honestly, I'm terrified of what a failed levy will do to our school community. The teachers and programs here are the safety nets for our students. It's the smaller class size where students can be seen and heard, not lost. It's the teacher that they have a connection with. It's the program that sparked an interest and the only reason they want to come to school. The cuts that will come with the levy failure present a heartbreaking picture for all. I will finish the way I started. Our society is facing a mental health crisis with a scarcity of outside resources, and I'm asking you to do all you can to help us take care of our kids. We cannot lose another one.
Thank you. Mrs. Myers.
Good evening. I am Beth Myers, a community member, a parent of two graduates, and one of the Crisis Intervention Counselors here at Centerville High School. I have held this position since 2004, and as I reflect back, I can honestly say there are very few similarities in what kids are dealing with and how they are coping in the past three to four years compared to years prior. On many occasions, I've heard people say, "Kids these days, they don't have any initiative. Where's the work ethic, the toughness, those darn cell phones?" There may be a sliver of truth in there, but it doesn't really matter because we need to meet them where they are. There's really just one solution, one way to meet these kids where they are, and that is by cultivating genuine relationships. Cultivating relationships must be intentional. They don't just happen. Research states each student should have five trusted adults in their lives, not including their parents. Authentic relationships take time, perseverance, patience, and trust to develop. If we do not pass our November levy, there will undoubtedly be a reduction in staff, which our district, and most importantly, our students, cannot endure. Teachers cannot possibly build relationships when they have 30-plus students sitting in their classrooms. That is an impossible task. Student programs will most certainly be eliminated without passage of our November levy. Again, programs provide purpose and a sense of belonging for our students, along with more opportunities to build relationships. The only way to combat the current mental health crisis is by passing our November levy. This passage will allow us to continue building authentic relationships and becoming trusted As Amy stated, we cannot, we cannot lose another student. When we lose a student, it is absolutely devastating to our school community. It affects everyone. Everyone feels the loss, and it takes a tremendous toll on our student body. It is absolutely crucial that we all vote yes for our upcoming levy.
Thank you.
Mrs. Myers, I just want to say from the board, it's good to see you here tonight.
All right, thank you. Next up is the, oh, there is no legislative report. Still on summer break, that's right, and there is no report from the student board reps, which takes us to the '24-'25 school year.
So, good evening. Tonight, my goal is really to give a brief overview of the start of the school year. We are nine days into the start of the school year, and we're off to a very, very good start. I said my goal tonight is really to recap the opening few days of school and give you, give you the board and the community the opportunity to hear where we are right now as a district, share our goals for the start of the school year, and the importance of working together to meet our mission. So tonight, I'm going to bounce around a little bit. I'm going to talk a little bit about our Opening Day staff meeting. I'm going to pull out, talk a little bit about our staffing. We talked about our staffing numbers a little bit last week in our work session, jump back into the Opening Day presentation, come back out, and share some things with you about the first day of school, and kind of go back and forth. So tonight, just to share a lot of information over the last few weeks. On August 12, we opened our traditional staff meeting. During the meeting, we reviewed our mission to empower, challenge, and support every learner to grow every day. Our strategic plan is the one document that ties all of us together. I'd like to talk about our strategic plan, how that ties our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our board, our community, all together working towards our mission. This is the common bond that is a team that we have together, that we work together to meet the needs of our students and our community. As part of our Opening Day staff meeting, we always take the time to recognize our new staff. We recognize our new staff, welcome our new staff to our team. This year, we added 21 new staff members, not new positions, to our team. This is outside the 48 positions that were cut during the school year or going into the school year. We had to replace certain positions to cover classrooms and services needed for all of our students based upon enrollment. I think it's important to share a little bit of information about our full-time equivalent. As you know, as the board, last December, we started having conversations and discussions about a reduction plan that ended up cutting 48 staff positions, 17 teachers, and 31 support staff. This means we started this year with 48 less staff in our buildings. It's 4% less than our current FTE. The reality is that we always closely monitor our full-time equivalent staff. Every single year, we evaluate our open positions and determine who can be moved and what positions can be eliminated. Even before the most recent levy request, and between the fall of 2019 and the fall of 2023, we reduced our FTE count by 17. So going into the start of last year, at this time last year, we were down 17 positions in the district. In the spring of 2020, we cut a central office administrative position. Last year, we did add one administrator. That one administrator is our Special Education Director, resulting in a net-zero change in the total number of administrators added to our staff since 2019. Back to our Opening Day message. You know, in our strategic plan, we have nine core principles, and I've listed a few of those principles on the screen. During the staff meeting, I focused on three of those principles, and I want to review three of those things again tonight. First, I want to look at the principles of building supportive relationships and nurturing meaningful partnerships. And I think you heard a little bit of that tonight from our speakers. We have, and we continue to have, a very good partnership with the Classroom Teachers Association. As you know, we agreed to a two-year contract with a 0% increase on the base, a 1% non-recurring stipend up to $1,000 maximum. We agreed to adding professional development days back into our school calendar. To that, we had to modify the district calendar, which made the Tuesday prior to the start of school a workday for our support staff. But more importantly, it gave our Special Education Director the opportunity to train our career professionals so that they are better prepared to meet the needs of our students for the Opening Day of school. The additional PD will be the opportunity, will be an opportunity for us to work together, train together, and discuss learning strategies amongst our colleagues. In addition to negotiations, we talked about creating a school safety committee. Over the next few weeks, I plan to work with CCTA to develop the Safe School Committee, a school safety task force to include representatives from all levels. The purpose of the task force is to provide a conduit for staff to express safety concerns through administration and strengthen communication between administration and staff regarding safety measures that have or will need to be put into place. At last, we have to continue to work together and strengthen our partnership, especially at the start of the school year and over the next several months. I truly believe that this partnership that we have has helped us get off to a great start for this school year. The second core principles I want to share again tonight with all of you is sustaining growth requires forward-thinking and a fiscally responsible plan, and we simply share the facts of our district finances. I shared the fact that the board approved unanimously and supported the decision to return to the ballot in November for a 3.9 mil operating levy. Money generated from this levy will help support the operating costs of the district. And I think it's important that we take a step back and really understand the size and scope of our district. We are a very large district with more than 8,200 students and about 1,100 employees in our buildings. We have over 1.3 million square feet of space on about 250 acres of land, and we maintain 16 facilities. Like any large operation, it costs money to keep schools running. We need staff, we need to staff our schools appropriately and maintain reasonable class sizes, train our staff members, and buy curriculum materials and classroom supplies. I think you heard it tonight from our Crisis Intervention Counselors, there is a need to continue to support our school counselors. There is a need to support our teachers and our administrators, our nurses, our school psychologists, and our school resource officers. We offer college and career pathways to prepare our graduates for the workforce. Our schools are well-known for going above and beyond the state's minimum requirements. We have to purchase supplies like bus fuel, paper supplies, copying machines, pay for electronic devices, and software to meet our student data needs. We are also dealing with aging facilities and aging infrastructure with our buildings. So we shared with the staff the information about the levy on November 5 ballot. If we don't pass in November, the next opportunity to receive additional funds from locally-voted levies would not occur until 2026. We would not receive any new money for the entire calendar year of 2025. This means that we would be faced with trying to save money wherever we can, as well as coming up with an additional reduction plan for the board to approve. As promised, I would share a little bit about the first day of school. In this video, you're actually going to get to see the first day of school at Centerville High School. This is not an edited version of this tape, and it's not looped, but you can see the entire process of our students' arrival at CHS. It'll take a few minutes to kind of get through the entire video, but it was a way for me to kind of capture what the first day might look like or what the first day does look like, especially here at CHS. We have over 7,121 students routed to take a bus to and from school each day. We have 1,723 CHS students are bus riders. That's about 64% of our student body here at the high school. About 80% of our district students are transported by bus. We also transport 657 non-public school students to 15 non-public schools. In fiscal year '23, the district spent about $7.7 million in transportation costs. Now, we do receive a little bit of state money for those costs. The district received in fiscal year '23 about $2.7. So if you do the math, the district has spent or used district finances for over $5 million from our finances to support our transportation and transporting our students. So hopefully, it gives you a little bit of idea of the work that takes place to make sure our students get routed. I think you'll see from the video, there's about 40 buses that come through, getting our students safely into Centerville High School. First day. So back to our staff meeting. I always feel like it's important for us to take time to celebrate the good things that happened across the district, and I believe it's important to look back and reflect on the previous year and to celebrate and acknowledge our accomplishments. And I like to take a few minutes, and I'm not going to go through every bullet point on the next few screens. First, I think it's great to have 8,217 pre-K students, pre-K to 12 students, enrolled and entering our buildings. It's not the number of students, because our enrollment numbers still tend to fluctuate and will continue to fluctuate over the next few weeks, but it's the opportunity we have to empower, challenge, and support the growth of our students. We continue to focus on the goals embedded in our strategic plan, such as the development of the Portia of the Elk and the implementation of the Character Strong Program in grades K through 12. We celebrate our OST data trends, the recognition nationally for improved math scores, and increased participation in our advanced placement courses. And I have to mention our graduation rates. 37 students, who for many reasons find challenges in a traditional high school setting, graduate from the School of Possibilities last year. That's approximately 5% of the 2024 graduating class. And more reasons to celebrate, the development of data dashboards, our Special Education Committee created to establish common praxis. We have a CARE portal that's set up. They raised over $10,000 in donations to help support students and our families. Additional or more reasons to celebrate, Centerville High School in the top 10% of U.S. public high schools, best communities for music education, and athletics and fine arts achievements, where there's too many of those to name and go through all those achievements. If we want to preserve the traditions we've always valued and continue to celebrate, the reasons I've just mentioned, we need to revisit the question raised in our previous community forums, and the question is this: As a community, do we want to continue to provide a comprehensive, above-average educational experience for our children and families? Recently, and just tonight, we heard concerns about a spending problem. We can keep cutting costs, we can keep reducing staff, we can lower salaries, we can make more, ask our people to do more and more work, we can reduce buying materials and equipment, or not buy materials and equipment. But if we keep cutting back, eventually, we'll end up with a below-average product or a below-average student. And I truly believe that we're all in this together. We have a great community, forward-thinking residents with a longstanding traditions and expectations, and I would like to invite our community to join our team, and more importantly, to join our mission. Together, we can do what's best for kids, build relationships, strengthen partnerships, and help our students grow. And that's my presentation tonight, unless there's any questions from the board. Before I sit down, I just want to emphasize one more thing, and I think it's important for our community to understand where we are as a district with our finances, and we need to emphasize the need that we have. And I think through different analogies that can be used. And for me, the check engine light is on. So the check engine light in your car, or the service light, when you're driving down the road, and that light comes on, you have two choices. You can call and get your car serviced, or you can ignore the problem. If you continue to ignore the problem, then we have more major costs and things that have to be fixed within our system, within our structure. So as the board, I know you're aware that our engine light is on, and it's really up to the community now to come forward and to help us in moving the district forward. Thank you.
Good evening. I have just one quick slide just to emphasize the things that Mr. Wesney talked about, and that is just to give the factual information about the levy, and then just to talk about a few things that are coming up in the month of September. First of all, the levy facts. November 5, 2024 is Election Day. We don't have an issue number yet. I anticipate having that next week, and so the minute that is released from the Board of Elections, I will be sure to communicate that out to all of you and whoever is interested in that information. It is a 3.9 mil operating levy for a continuing period of time that will raise about $11.2 million a year, and that is the amount certified by the county auditor. And that dollar amount per month, per $100,000 of home value, is $11.38. I think in some of the literature, it rounds to $11.40 per month, but again, it's just a rounding thing, depending on what number you're dividing. And so again, those are the levy facts to share with you tonight, just that factual information. In the month of September, we will be reviewing the financial master plan at our work session. That always happens in the month of September, so that'll be coming to you next month. We always wait until September so that we can make sure that staffing is as current as possible, so we can do our best to project the salaries, which is the majority of our budget. And so that is now mostly finalized. There's still a few things here and there, people coming and going, and some resignations and things like that, but for the most part, that's all set. I also just wanted to share with you too, that, and I hope that we can, I'm looking at Mr. Wesney, we were invited on September 16 to a legislative meeting with the Montgomery County Treasurers and Superintendents, and so that, and we're going to talk about school funding. And so I'm helping to put together a little bit of information on that. I know Sam Braun from the Shared Resource Center is going to talk about property taxes as well, so I don't, the agenda hasn't come completely together yet, but Mr. Young actually requested this meeting with the area treasurers and superintendents. So that's in September, but it's before, I think it's actually the day of our work session. So I don't know if it'll be the work session or the regular meeting that we present that information to you, but we will give you an update on that once it's happened. It's at the Educational Service Center. So it's, as far as I know, it's not open, I mean, it's just for the treasurers and superintendents, but again, we'll be sure to report back on that. Thank you.
Moving on to the treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the July 2024 financial statements, including the monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $39,388.94.
Remove.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings: July 22, 2024 regular meeting, August 1, 2024 special meeting, and August 19, 2024 work session. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Consider approving the purchase and sales of commercial paper and banker's acceptances and the income earned from commercial paper and banker's acceptances from fiscal year 2024. Ms. Sauber, would you like to?
Sure. You want to know what that is? Commercial paper is a particular investment tool that school districts are permitted by Ohio law. are, um, permitted by Ohio law to invest in, and, um, the Ohio Department of Education and workforce and the, um, Ohio Auditor of State requires that, uh, I present this information to you and then submit, um, to them, but it just talks about, um, the different investments throughout the course of the year, um, and the, and the earnings from that.
And those complete lists are in our packet.
For, for the commercial paper, yes.
Ms. Sauber, what the school district can invest in is very, very, very restricted.
It's very limited. It, it's commercial paper. It's, um, uh, treasuries and, and bonds, uh, government treasuries and bonds, and money markets are, are the main CDs, um, that type of thing, but very, very safe, very, um, um, secure and, and liquid, uh, investments.
Thank you.
All right. Call the roll, thanks.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Uh, superintendent recommendations. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B, for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C, for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D one for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reason and on the dates given.
Remove.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C one, for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. And the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D two for the supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
Remove.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Jane.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Consider approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five test security procedures required by the Ohio Revised Code and Administrative Code three-three-zero-one-dash-one-three-dash-zero-one.
Remove.
And, Ms. Colby, we talked about this last week.
Yeah, this is just an email occurrence. We have to adopt our own local, um, test security measures that reflect what's in the state and the world's limited.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Um, any final comments regarding past role business from the Board of Education?
I have one.
Oh.
So just some good news to kind of share, uh, with everyone. Uh, I've received a couple of emails today, and just want to kind of brag a little bit. Uh, this is an email I received from the Higher School Boards Association on behalf of two of our school board members, Allison Durnbaugh and Megan Sparks. Uh, they received the OSBA, the twenty twenty-four OSBA, uh, aptitude award. Uh, the aptitude award is a district award as part of the STARS program, service training, aptitude, and recognition. So I just want to say congratulations for representing the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one-two-one-point-two-two-G-one, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official. No other business will be conducted except to come out of executive session to adjourn. I have a motion.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes. Thank you all very much.